Alright, so I will call again in order at seven o'clock. We'll start with a presentation of colors and place the flag.
Please rise. Color guard, forward march. Oh, color guard, prepare to post colors. Color guard, post colors. Everyone please join me in the standard of allegiance, please remove all non-religious items here.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, forward. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, forward march. You guys are all very...
Thank you guys. Make sure you have some cake now. There's cakes to drink in the refrigerator, so help yourself. Alrighty then. So first up, we have a presentation, so we have a resolution of appreciation to Chris and Eileen Cox. So, is Chris here? Is Chris here? So let me just say a couple things real quick. You know, it's a very small town, obviously, and one of the things I say in the mayor's letter is, you know, it's...
Sorry.
Hey! Don't you like that?
Still want to be...
I'm sorry. It's easy to do nothing. I say that a lot in my mayor's letter, and I really mean it. It's really easy to not do anything. And so, I really think it's terrific when somebody takes nothing and turns it into something. And I think that's really what makes small towns great, is when somebody decides on their own to go ahead and try and start a tradition, and try and start something with, you know, just trying to be a good neighbor and help the town and get the people together. And I think, you know, the crawfish world is terrific. You know, bringing people together, it's a very casual environment. I think it's really a lot of fun. And I know I look forward to it, even though I'm not going to come forward to the crawfish, but everything else is really terrific. So, we thought it was appropriate, down at Chris's job twice, that we would recognize you for this proclamation. So sir, whereas following winded severe hailstorms in the spring of 2017, Chris Cox provided a Bible service to assistance of Lakewood Village during a time of urgent need. And whereas within six months, Chris and his family bought a house and moved to Lakewood Village, whereas Chris and Eileen immediately became actively involved in our community events, donating time, energy, resources. Whereas in the spring of 2018, Chris and Eileen organized and sponsored our first annual Lakewood Village Crawfish Oil. And whereas that first success, Chris and Eileen organized our most recent 2019 Crawfish Oil, which involved classic car shows becoming an annual event that our citizens look forward to each year. Now therefore, I, Dr. Marky Vargas, Mayor of the Town of Lakewood Village, do hereby proclaim the Town of Lakewood Village appreciation for Chris and Eileen Cox and call upon all our citizens to join me in congratulating Chris and Eileen for their outstanding commitment and friendship to the Town of Lakewood Village. Chris.
Well, hang it up.
You got a baby at home?
Yeah, appreciate it, guys.
The next thing that we have is we have presentations to our outgoing... Yes, right? To the, to our outgoing council members. So, one of the things that we do in Lakewood Village is that as council members rotate off or decide to pursue other things, we have to give everybody a gift. Because Lakewood Village, we're small, we have to have people serve. We need, we gotta volunteer. We have to have people to help us out. And people are willing to commit their time and their energy. And there's just not a lot of people patting you on the back telling you, you know, "We appreciate what you're doing and you're doing a great job." You know, that just, that just doesn't happen very often. So, we think it's really important that we as a council, that when people leave, that we come together and we, we say, "We appreciate what you've done and your time and effort you spent working with us." So, that's, that's why we give gifts that we think, you know, really show that we appreciate what you've done. So first up, we have Liz. Liz, if you would step up. So what we've done here is we went to the state of Texas and we had them fly a flag over the Capitol. At your honor. It was done on April 6th, which is...
My birthday!
My birthday! So we did that, and so it's signed by our Sergeant Arms of the House of Representatives. So, this is for your service and we appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you so much. This is very nice.
You know, it's wonderful when people give their time, obviously, so. Okay, Mr. Reed is next. So, um... Okay, so Ed's actually served for six years.
Six and seven.
Six and seven, something like that. Maybe on the MDD. Okay, well, Ed served quite a bit. So then we have for Ed is we have a, we have two things. First is we have a flag that was flown over the Capitol.
Ah, super.
So it was flown over the Capitol and it's signed by our Congressman, Mr. Vargas.
Dr. Vargas, great.
Yes, we signed that along with your dark skies letter. So, you know, we got it to be signed too. So, so that is your flag over the state cap, over the Capitol.
You want to turn it around a second?
Yeah.
And then we have, we have one other thing for you. So one of the things that we've tried to do in the past is when a council member has served a long time, we try and come up with something a little bit different.
Yeah, I've been...
So what we did is I thought long and hard about what it would be, and so what we decided to give you was a gift.
What is it?
Which is a bar light. Which, I had to chase down the guys from Cozer because they were ripping it out of the thing. I mean, we grabbed one. So, this is a bar light which actually works. Now, all I did was grab the light, Danny thought, made the fixture, Danny cleaned, Danny did everything. And there's an inscription here for you, Ed. It's on here, which is, "For Mayor Pro Tem, Ed Reed, shining light in our dark skies." So that's for you. It has an extended warranty.
Well, that's good to know.
It extends all the way to the door.
All the way to the door. But I know how to get it off. Do you have a moment to say a couple things?
Sure, you're sure, yes.
Okay, well first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for their support during my six or seven years I've lost count of combined service on both the MDD and on the council. It was a great experience for me. I learned a lot. I would say that I enjoyed most of it. But I do have, gonna have some fond memories of the time. I'd also like to take just a minute to recognize someone in the audience who, without her support, it would have been very difficult to contribute those five or seven years, whatever. And so I'd like to have, well she's already standing, so my wife Pam is here.
Thank you.
As well as her two grandsons.
Two of the thirteen.
As scored, Cody and Belay. I appreciate all of her help during it. I'd also like to give a special thanks to Mayor Vargas and Linda for their support. And I'd like to wish them, as well as the members of the MDD and the board, the board, the council, and give, wishing the best of luck in the future for moving Lakewood Village forward. So, thank you very much.
Alright.
Yeah, definitely. Take your photos as honored public.
I'm taking the tape.
Thank you. We gotta get this lamp close out here.
I'll add you for your...
There you go, Ed. Alright, next thing up we have on the agenda is the swearing in of our newest council members. So we're going to start off the procedure here with Clint. So Clint will be first up.
Can you read your cliff notes okay?
So, I think I got it. Alright, so...
Don't stand in front of the light.
Raise your right hand. I, Clint Bouchon.
Clint Bouchon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the Office of Councilman.
The duties of the Office of Councilman.
For the Town of Lakewood Village.
The Town of Lakewood Village.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
The State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And the Town of Lakewood Village.
Town of Lakewood Village.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mr. Wilson up?
Alright, Ed is up.
Stand in front of the light.
No, don't block the light. Alright. I, Saint Andrew.
Ah, Matthew Wilson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of Office of Councilman.
The duties of Office of Councilman.
For the Town of Lakewood Village.
The Town of Lakewood Village.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
The State of Texas.
The State of Texas.
The Town of Lakewood Village.
The Town of Lakewood Village.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Ed. Alright, we have one more to go, which is Mr. Barrage. But I think it'd be more appropriate for someone else to do the oath. I've only known her a couple years now. I know someone that's older and younger. So I'm going to let Councilman Lepley swear in.
Please raise your right hand. I, Eric Barrage.
I, Eric Barrage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the Office of Councilman.
The duties of the Office of Councilman.
For the Town of Lakewood Village.
For the Town of Lakewood Village.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the law of the United States.
The Constitution and law of the United States.
The State of Texas and the Town of Lakewood Village.
The State of Texas and the Town of Lakewood Village.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, so first item up was our consent agenda. All of the consent agenda are self-explanatory. Does anyone have any questions about the consent agenda? We have minutes for meetings. A, what a 380 agreement is, is an economic agreement that you can get governments to make where they agree to economic subsidization or just economic transactions between two. So, we have an agreement with the MDD that basically we are allowed to help them and they're allowed to borrow money from us. That's what the 380 agreement is. So it's an interlocal agreement between the two governments. And there was a standing kind of line of credit for the MDD with the city. That line of credit hasn't been used in several years. But the line of agreement, the line of credit expires every five years, so it needs to be renewed just in case the MDD will need some money. That's a 380 agreement. Anybody have any questions? Alright, a motion to approve the consent agenda. You want a second?
I have a second.
That's second, so all those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Alright, next up, consideration of the election of Mayor Pro Tem. So we have to elect a mayor pro tem after the election. So Linda, your name is on this. Did you have something to say?
I would like to consult to appoint a mayor pro tem.
Okay. Alright, you know, one of the things when I, we put that with the mayor pro tem, I don't, I think everybody, I have no problem with anybody being mayor pro tem. I think you're all qualified and you're all smart, good people, and I don't have any problem with it. The kind of qualifications that we look for is in our, in our town with the mayor pro tem, they kind of have to be available during daytime hours because there are meetings with developers, engineers, attorneys. It's more of an availability thing that we need out of the mayor pro tem as opposed to somebody with some, you know, skill set, like they're, you know, engineers and that kind of thing. So that's kind of still what we've been looking at, someone who is really available during the daytime.
Based on the experience so far that I've seen with everybody, I've been real appreciative of Darryl's time. I know he still works full-time, but yeah. We kind of take for granted that because you work from home, you're available during the day. I know that, you know, that probably puts a strain on your work schedule, but personally, I think you, you know, the effort that you've been putting forward to meet with developers, come up speed very quickly. I want to nominate Darryl for the position of mayor pro tem.
Thank you. Anybody else? Have any?
I agree, yeah.
I can say that with Darryl, there's a lot of scenes that probably everyone doesn't see. You know, maybe sometimes you're a little bit higher up here, but when we're not in session, I think you get a lot of the talent. So, you know, I agree with Pam, but I think it'd be a good thing.
Thanks. And I won't let everybody know, I mean, you know, it's one of those unseen things, but I know all last summer, Darryl was learning the ropes. Oh, we've been at the wells and the pumps and the storage tanks, having to run the valves and flip the switches and... It was, it was a lot to take in. And, you know, but I appreciate him backstopping me and Clint, you know, over there to make sure that we had pretty much constant coverage during our summer sessions. I, it sounds like we need a motion. Did Clint already make a motion?
No, I just, that was my nomination. I think everybody's got some other themes. I've motioned to approve, you know, like, Darryl West as a mayor pro tem.
Okay, a motion does. Okay, we got a second. All those in favor? Alright, very good, thank you. Hold on, hold on, I'm gonna make one. Name plates for Darryl.
It doubles your current salary.
Okay, next up, we have consideration of the designation of authorized signers on the bank accounts. So Ed was an authorized signer. Ed is obviously no longer an authorized signer. So, we need to have three signers.
So the current signers are Mark and myself.
Ed, what?
Oh, Linda, but everything requires two, so kind of...
Right, so the problem we have is that Linda, it's not a problem, but Linda obviously can't sign anything or later her or someone. And if I'm out of town, that, we have to have three people besides Linda. That's what we've always, we've always had to, so that, so that we can do that. The other thing that we instituted was, and we'll bring this up next month, is the MDD president is an authorized signer for the MDD. Because the idea of we can sign, the city can sign for the MDD. The MDD can't sign for the city. But if we want the MDD president to have the authority to run the MDD and have that. So that'll be next month when the MDD elects their, their officers. But I think the idea would be that we would add Darryl as an authorized signer.
I think the mayor pro tem comes with that, comes with that additional responsibility.
Legally, you can do anything I can do, you have the authority, so... I think we have to, we need to have a motion.
I make a motion to add Darryl West as an authorized signer on the making.
Okay, I have a motion. Second. Eric has the second. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Alright, next up, we have, our engineers are here, so we have Todd Strauss is here. So the idea here is we have a boring done, we also have boring, and so the boring results are back. We have some handouts here. So we have the feedback from the boring. Todd's gonna update us. And Todd's also gonna talk about the calendar. See where we're at, what we need to do. Todd, go ahead, sir.
Alright, appreciate the time, Mayor, Council. So again, Todd Strauss, Community Home Associates, this is our job on murder. So, a quick update on the geotext of the exhibit that we passed out. Just shows the limits of the roadway reconstruction, the elevation project. And then the targets that were added were the 16 geotechnical boring deal work that was done by CMJ Engineering. Took a 16 millimeter to a five-foot-deep boring. So what we got back from CMJ, we got preliminary just being of the boring logs, which is, it just shows you the stratification of the soil for the 16 millimeter calculations. And basically, it's a lot of site, it's a lot of site, geotech. Show, but the, we were able to run some preliminary calculations, and so we're still waiting for the final report, but I want to give you guys some just more here feedback from the geotech. And so, we asked that they look at the six-inch thick concrete section, six-inch subgrade, which is the similar section of pavement in the first phase that was a few years ago. And it looks like that. It would be at, it's a good design. And they gave us kind of a, an expected, a life expectancy based on different truck traffic. So for a six-inch thick concrete section, that would allow 20 allowable heavy trash truck type vehicles per day for, and that would give you a 20-year life. And 13 allowable passes of heavy truck would give you a 30-year life. So, they also gave us some calculations on if we were to increase that section to a seven-inch. And with a seven-inch concrete section and a six-inch subgrade, that design life would increase to 50 heavy truck traffic for a 20-year design life and 33 truck passes for a 30-year. So you could basically double the life expectancy with just a one-inch-thick increase in your section.
And a heavy load is not any residential, it's not a pulling boat, it's none of those.
Yeah, a heavy load is a trash truck or a...
Like a cement truck.
Right, a fire, fire engine would be a heavy load. But yeah, just your everyday use is under that heavy load calculation.
And just everybody knows, and the numbers you're talking about are like the order of 15 to 20 per day.
Right.
We have 25 EMS runs a year. You know, I mean, so those are, we're not cars, we're not through anything. So I think these are conservative on lifespan.
Right. But we just wanted to give you the option to give you the various data points. But the soil was very similar to what was encountered over here, you know, expansive place, basically. So what we anticipate, and then there's no surprise that the final report from the geotech will have recommendations for different kind of techniques to help get the moisture away from the pavement. Because really, we're trying to get the, get the moisture away, the drainage away with the design, but then also get it away from just kind of sitting on top of it. So there'll be such as insulation and moisture barriers, which is, can be a physical barrier like a plastic membrane that you would do along the edge of the road. Or potentially extending the subgrade out past the concrete section to help with that moisture protection.
So Todd, the current design over here, we put it in a textile liner. My impression was that was to keep the aggregate from washing out the fine aggregate in the road base. It wasn't a, like, it wasn't meant to be a water barrier. It was meant to keep the
Right.
The fine particles in the base from washing out. Is that, is that right?
And that's what I'm saying, creating, I said.
But is that, are you calling that, would that be part of your water barrier, or that's, that's not like that?
What we would be looking for is in areas where there's vegetation, trees, or shrubs close to the edge of the pavement that tends to suck the moisture quicker out of, from underneath the pavement in those areas, we might stop that. So what, what we would probably recommend was a four-foot-deep with a trencher along those sections where we have. And we may not have those issues, it's just, I don't know if you all drive down county roads very often, but on the side of the county road where there's a bunch of trees, it's very, very wavy. On the side of the road where there's not, it's very smooth. And the reason is that the vegetation is pulling the moisture out of the soil.
So that liner we did over here is not, that's for the aggregate. So it has nothing to do with the moisture.
So these moisture, these items, they'll be first, we'll get into the detailed design if there's something unique that there may be specific areas that we need to do something or like that. It's not gonna be for the entire roadway section, just, you know, site-specific. Just to kind of give us some options, a little caliper, getting into that, getting into that design.
Right. And if we don't need it, we won't put it in the ground for sure. I think we can control the moisture by just having good drainage away from the roadway area. And that's, we've got some issues in this certain phase where there will be some drainage. So we're in the detailed drainage that we'll be looking at to improve that condition.
But we don't have much shoulder in certain places. The barges begin at the pavement's edge.
Correct.
But you gotta have a shoulder, right?
You don't have to, it's a safety thing. Yeah, the subgrade will extend one foot outside the edge of the concrete right now to provide that support as long as you have, you have a dry new surface, if somebody gets off the road, that's what you want to have.
Over here, we extended the subbase a foot beyond edge of pavement.
Right, we'll do the same.
To try, we thought, because the garbage trucks are not right on the edge, but to try and help out some of the flexing. Is that consistent? I mean, is that, that was a good thing? I mean, you agree that is the right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Would it make sense to go further than that? Would it make sense to go further than that, or that's basically, you're not gaining any incremental?
It's there, it's put in there to support the pavement itself, the farther you go out, the less it does affect the pavement. Most typical sections go one foot faster.
Anybody jump in, you know me, I'm asking questions.
Would you make the, the extra inch that was in the subgrade, something?
It's in the thickness of the concrete.
The thickness of the concrete.
So it's still the same thickness of your subgrade, the six-inch thick, your concrete section will be just an inch later.
Over here, we just did six.
Right.
Is there anything that you saw over there that we need to go seven, or is that just?
It's really, really early in the life of the project, it's tough to tell, it's something to show up after five, six, seven years, if you have those issues.
Yeah, I think that the nice thing about that is, is it's trying to give you some, some scope to say, you know, six inches is this much, one inch doubles the life, you know, it doesn't scale right, it's not even at 12 inches, it's that.
Right.
It's asymmetrical.
And the cost to add that is, I mentioned quick numbers, around $300,000 for the entire project, to add that additional inch of concrete versus, I mean, we're at a $4,000 project, if I remember correctly.
Right, yeah.
So it's just something to think about, we don't like to spend money that's not necessary, but if you can double the life of your, of your pavement section by adding an inch of concrete, it's, we probably would make that recommendation.
Well, it's good enough, wouldn't know that.
What was that estimate cost?
About $300,000. And we can bid the project with a six-inch typical section, then an alternate, and just see what it comes, the concrete price is about $120 a cubic yard now, two years ago it was $90. So it's a...
Joe, would it make sense for the, from the simplicity standpoint, from the construction standpoint? Everything over there is one level profile, there's no, or what, this street could be six, that one would be seven, or you wouldn't recommend that because that's a complexity for, so it would be all or nothing?
Correct.
Okay.
Although the spine road.
Yeah.
I mean, every, everybody that lives on the side of town comes up the spine road road, everybody asks it except for the road here.
But if we said, like, is it, is it an option to say, like, for instance, where Matt lives is a, is a much smaller street, he doesn't have nearly the traffic, so he would be six inches, but this would be seven.
Yeah, we could specify the difference.
But the road guys are capable of not screw that up.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, right.
And so we also updated the schedule, because the original schedule that we did was, had the survey work and the geotech work being done concurrently. So what we've done, basically just shifted everything down, since we haven't started the survey, don't we have a survey work yet? So we just showed that starting in June, and actually, we just talked about the survey today, and they've been getting behind with the rain days, they've only been able to get out two days a week now, so just getting into their kind of queue, because it gives us a month, a week time right now, so we increased that, we had two months, we increased that time to three months.